And let us begin. Good morning, everybody. Today is November ninth. The time is ten oh one, and I will call the planning board meeting to order. We are joined today by Commissioners Dorner.
What?
And Commissioner Geraldo.
Good morning.
And I'm Chair Shapiro. Please note that the deadline for all participant preregistration and for all submission of materials and exhibits was twelve noon on the Tuesday before this planning board meeting, and any registered speakers may join the meeting with link provided in the email. And of course, anyone may tune in to watch the planning board meeting via live stream. If you wish to speak or become person of record, just look at the screen before you. That's the best way to get on. In addition to the Commissioners, we're joined by Delisa Coleman, who is our senior counsel. Ms. Coleman, good to see you. We're also joined by Jessica Jones, our planning board administrator. We have Rhonda Ford, our technical hearing writer, and James Hunt, the division chief of the developer view division. Good morning, Mr. Hunt. We are also joined by Kenneth Flanagan, Iran Croner, bringing us technology behind the scenes as always. So with that on to the agenda, the first item that I want to note is that you were looking at empty spaces behind us because we are moving into our new building the end of this week and next week. So we're very excited about our future in this new building in Largo. There you'll see reference on the screen before you sixteen sixteen McCormick Drive is the new address. We'll be filtering in starting a little bit this week. So next time you hear from me, you'll be hearing from me in the new building. But I also want to take just a minute to say goodbye to this building, which is a long and storied history with the planning board and the planning department. Personally, I remember walking into this building for the first time. It was just about twenty-five years ago exactly. And I think we all have different versions of these stories. So just a little bit of farewell to the county administration building up from Marlboro as we embark on our new adventure in Largo with our new headquarters. So I want to mark both. So I also want to, we have one item, an action item under supplemental items, and this is a resolution of appreciation for our park police chief Stanley R. Johnson. I'm sad to report that he is retiring. He's retiring after thirty-seven years of service to Maryland National Capital Park and Planning Commission. He started his career as a patrol officer. Many, many promotions and many, many years as chief. He's just had an incredible impact, incredible legacy. We're going to be honoring him a bit down the road, but we have a resolution that I want us to approve in advance of the of future recognitions that we're going to be providing him. So so Commissioners, I would look for a motion to approve the resolution of appreciation for Chief Johnson.
Don't move. Thank you.
A second, and I'll thank him for his service for many years and his leadership. For Chair Shapiro, one thing that he gave us when he became chief was he gave us his little badges that we got. And and I use it all the time to stop cars and and to make citizens. I did ask him for a teaser, and he said, no, that I wasn't going to get that. So I appreciate his leadership. I've had some chats. My father was a police officer, so I'm always interested in seeing kind of how we do things with the accreditations and sort of the management style because I saw a lot of that when I was growing up. I'd go to the academy and sit through classes and demos and stuff they were doing. And it's just kind of fun to see that on the other side now. And I appreciate his leadership in in helping us go through lots of good changes, and we'll definitely miss him.
Appreciate the kind words, and I would insist on seeing myself with those. Any further discussion, I will call the role Commissioner Dorner.
Do I?
Commissioner Geraldo.
I vote aye.
I vote aye as well. The ayes have a three zero. Thank you, Chief Johnson. Again, we'll be recognizing him a bit down the road too in a more formal way. Next item is item two on our agenda. I'd look for a motion to approve the draft minutes of November second, twenty twenty-three.
Move approval, Mr. Chair.
A second.
A motion by Commissioner Geraldo, second by Commissioner Dorner, discussion, no discussion. I'll call the role Commissioner Geraldo.
I vote aye.
Commissioner Dorner.
Do I?
I vote aye as well. The ayes have a three zero. Next, we have item free C on our agenda is a parks and rec item, land purchase agreement. Mr. Sun, I will give you the staff presentation. Take it away.
Good morning, Chairman Shapiro, members of the planning board. For the record, my name is Paul Sun, an acquisition specialist, Prince George's County Department of Parks and Recreation. It's a great pleasure here to be here today, present this momentous land purchase agreement. Recognizing we're in a time crunch today, the information is provided for you in your packets. So please let me know if you want, wish for me to present the information, or you wish for me to skip directly to the summary recommendations, followed by any questions, comments.
Commissioner Sun, do you need more detail on this, or is it okay if he goes right to the punchline?
I'm good with the summary.
Yeah, I'm very happy about this. You're good with the summary as well.
Okay, very good. Um, it's almost been two years, and it's been a tremendous team effort. I must say, this might be the largest acquisition Department of Parks and Recreation has ever made. If you go and skip down to slide three, here's a aerial map of the property. Let's go ahead and skip to slide six. The program open space funding for this acquisition was approved on October twenty-fifth, a special shout out by Governor Westmore at the State Board of Public Works hearing. He was very excited about this acquisition for the Charles Branch Stream Valley Park, permanently preserve this land for conservation and enjoyment and benefit generations of Marylanders and Prince Georgians to come. Very excited to advance the project for Prince George's County. This this concludes staff's presentation, but I wanted to note that should you approve this acquisition, we have added the resolution to the consent agenda item for later this morning. Are there any questions, comments?
Nope, I'm very happy with this with this purchase agreement.
I just, I'm also equally pleased with this. I want to find out, do you have any idea for how long it's going to take to get the natural surface trail in there? Where we've got like the five day miles of trails this is going to plan because I very much look forward to going to this area and taking a beat.
Well, we have a we have a sidewalk with all the teams next Tuesday to start looking at this. But obviously, one of the first things we'll need to do is work towards closing their settlement on the project, which we hope to be hopefully ended this year or early next year. But after that, I think we can start moving this forward.
Great. Fantastic. Look forward to it. Commissioner Dorner will join you next week, I believe.
Come on up. We have a big team already assembled.
That is a beautiful piece of property.
Yeah, very excited about this one, truly. So if there's no further questions for staff, Commissioners, I would look for a motion.
I move approval, Mr. Chair, on the land purchase agreement.
We've got a motion by Commissioner Geraldo, second by Commissioner Dorner, land purchase agreements, discussion, no discussion. I'll call the role Commissioner Geraldo.
I vote aye.
Commissioner Dorner.
Great work in getting this to the final stages.
I agree. Vote aye as well. Thank you, Mr. Sun. Thank you, Mr. Quatropi. Excuse me. Thank you, Ms. Ewing. Thank you, Director Tyler. Nice work all on this project.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Hey, Commissioners, before we go to the agendas, consent agenda, I want to bring up under supplemental, as Commissioners, I want to bring up one bit of sad news as well. You may or may not have heard, but we lost somebody who we've seen a number of times, Dan Lynch, one of the attorneys who's come before us any number of times over the years. I'm sad to say that he very recently passed. And you know, all of our sympathies to his family and his friends and his coworkers. I just want to personally recognize him for his professionalism and his kindness and all the ways in which he's had a really positive impact in Prince George's County. So just a bit of sad news.
I share in those thoughts, Mr. Chair. Since I've been on the board, I've seen Dan Lynch several times, and he's always been professional and someone who advocates well for his clients. And you're right, he's been instrumental in a lot of projects in the county. So I extend my condolences and sympathies to his family and and the members of his firm.
Yes, very much so. Just wanted to share that from the dais, and let's move on with the agenda. We have a we have a number of items on the consent agenda, including one related to the item we just heard. So is there anyone who wishes to oppose the staff's recommendations for these consent agenda items for A, B, D, E, F, and G? Any board members, anyone from the public? If not, Commissioners, I would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, after consideration of the record for item numbers for A, for B, for D, and for D through four G, I move adoption of the staff findings and approval of the items on the consent agenda in accordance with the recommendations of our staff.
Second.
We've got a motion by Commissioner Geraldo, second by Commissioner Dorner. I just want to make sure that the resolution that we were referring to is actually on the consent agenda. Because in the notes that I have, I don't see it.
Here it's item forty, like David.
Okay, there we go. Item forty. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Coleman. I appreciate that. All right, we've got a motion, the second, no further discussion. I will call the role Commissioner Geraldo.
I vote aye.
Commissioner Dorner.
Do I?
I vote aye as well. The ayes have a three zero. We'll move on to our regular agenda items. First is item five. This is zoning map amendment ZMA two zero two two dash oh oh three, Smith Lake Estates. There's a companion item for this. We have, this is an evidentiary hearing, but we'll only swear folks in if there are folks who are going to be testifying. We will start with the staff report from Mr. Lockhart, and then we'll hear from Mr. Tedesco. Ms. Lockhart, floor is yours.
Good morning. Doing a quick sound check?
Yep, we can hear you fine.
Great, thank you. Good morning, Chair Shapiro and members of the planning board. For the record, I am Dominique Lockhart with the zoning section. Item number five on the agenda is zoning map amendment ZMA dash two zero two two dash zero zero three, titled Smith Lake Estates. This application consists of rezoning the subject property from the residential rural zone to the residential planned development zone. This case was previously heard at the May eighteenth, twenty twenty-three planning board hearing. The application was remanded to the planning board in order to post illegal advertisement as required per the zoning ordinance. Staff have confirmed that the legal advertisements were published. Based on the findings presented in the previous technical staff report, staff recommends that the planning board adopts that recommendation of approval with conditions of zoning map amendment ZMA dash two zero two two dash zero zero three. This recommendation will be transmitted to the zoning hearing examiner prior to being heard by the district council. This concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lockhart. Commissioners, any questions for staff? Seeing them, Mr. Tedesco, turn to you. And again, we share all of our sympathies for the difficult news.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Matthew Tedesco, the law from that may have a Z. Excuse me.
Stan, it's a difficult place, sir.
Yeah, thank you for your kind words and for the board's kind words about Dan. I'm going to try to stay composed. This matter is before you simply for the fact that when we were before you back in May, unfortunately, the legal posting that's required for zoning map amendments to PD zones was not effectuated to no fault of the applicant. However, it did come to our attention fairly recently after even having the zoning hearing examiner evidentiary hearing in August. So in an effort to cure that, the legal newspaper advertisement was made, as Ms. Lockhart indicated. We reposted the property for this hearing, but we had a fairly robust and lengthy hearing back in May, and for the reasons that were provided, then we would further incorporate and adopt as testimony here today, all the testimony that was presented at the May hearing. And this is more or less a formality, a technical formality, but a formality nonetheless to ensure that all requirements of the new zoning ordinance as it relates to notice have been adhered to. Notwithstanding the fact that we are now before you again on the same application that you heard back in May, and we will be doing the same thing before the ZHE as that hearing also currently requires legal notification in the newspaper, which both of which have been made, and the property has been posted, and all other notifications for today's hearing have been sent. So there has been ample notification in this in this case. And just for evidentiary purposes, for the record, we would incorporate and adopt all the testimony once again that was provided back in May. We did, in addition, and I'll conclude because I know time is very short today. We did include additional backup, which was basically more or less of a belt and suspenders as it relates to the public benefit features for this property. Should the zoning ordinance change before this case gets to the district council as it relates to planned development zones that seek to further codify the public benefit aspects of these types of projects and rezoning. So we just felt it was appropriate as a belt and suspenders, notwithstanding the fact that the law is what it is today. It could change in the future. And hopefully, to obviate any potential future remands, we did provide an additional memorandum by the deadline this past Tuesday. So with that, Mr. Chairman, we do have the full assemblage of our team here. I don't think we need to call on any of them. Again, this is more of a technical formality. We appreciate the board's support. We appreciate staff support. This is the first planned development rezoning in the county. We look forward to bringing it to fruition, and we thank you for your consideration and time this morning. And now that I've got my composure, I thank you again for your very kind words of my partner, who I shared my career with for twenty years.
Understood. Commissioners, you've heard from Mr. Tedesco on this as well as staff. This is a public hearing. We've got nobody signed up to speak. I will close the public hearing. And Commissioners, what's your pleasure on this item?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the zoning map amendment ZMA dash two oh two two dash zero zero three along with the findings and associated conditions and that for purposes of this hearing that will incorporate and adopt the testimony that was provided in the May twenty twenty-three hearing on this matter.
So I'll second, but just also incorporate an applicant exhibit one as well.
Exactly.
Motion is fine with that. We've got a motion, the second, motion by Commissioner Geraldo, second by Commissioner Dorner, discussion. Seen no discussion. I'll call the role Commissioner Geraldo.
I vote aye.
Commissioner Dorner.
Do I?
I vote aye as well. The ayes have a three zero. Thank you. You can hold on, Mr. Tedesco, because you'll be coming up a few more times. We have item six on the agenda, Commissioners. This is the draft resolution companion, item five. Ms. Lockhart, Mr. Tedesco, unless you have anything that you want to bring to us on this, which I assume is not, then Commissioners, I would look for a motion to approve the draft resolution.
Move approval of the draft resolution, Mr. Chair.
Second.
A motion is second. Ms. Coleman, worth good enough on this item? Right, kind of motion is second, motion by Commissioner Geraldo, second by Commissioner Dorner. Any discussion? I'll call the role Commissioner Geraldo.
I vote aye.
Commissioner Dorner.
Do I?
I vote as well. The ayes have a three zero for the draft resolution.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item seven on our agenda. Mr. Tedesco, I think you're on for that one as well. This is a DSP detailed site plan, DSP oh four oh five four dash oh seven, Belafonte, Clinton Self-Storage. We have Ho-Jung Garland, who's going to be giving the staff presentation. Mr. Hunt, you have something you want to say to us as we begin this one? And then we'll hear from Mr. Tedesco as needed.
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the planning board. For the record, James Hunt with the Development Review Division. I just want to take a quick moment. I know we don't have a lot of time today, but I wanted to introduce to you all our new planner for within the urban design section, Ms. Ho-Jung Garland. She is not a stranger to the planning board or to the Maryland National Capital Park and Planning Commission because she came from the Montgomery Park side. So she served over there for quite some time and has decided to come to the bright, wonderful sunny side of Prince George's County. So we're really excited to have her on board. She's already taken off on the short time that she's been here on a lot of design measures and given a lot of great feedback. So we're really excited to have her on board, excited on the new endeavors that are going to be taking place within the urban design section as it relates to a lot of the reviews. So get ready. Going to have a lot coming from her. So congratulations, Ho-Jung, for coming on board, and welcome to the commission.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you for the introduction, Ms. Garland. Take it away. The floor is yours.
Great, thank you so much. Thank you so much for such an awesome introduction. Yes, I started my job in MCPC in two thousand nine, about ten years ago in the community planning. So I'm so excited to come back and see some of my plan or my, you know, project is coming to the fruition. So thank you. All right.
I have to say, if you started in two thousand nine, that's almost fifteen years ago.
Oh, yes, yes.
I'm sorry to tell you that.
Thank you. All right, so just good morning for the record. I am Ho-Jung Garland with the Urban Design Section. This item number seven is detailed site plan as a DSP zero four zero five four dash oh seven, Belafonte, which is six amendment to DSP zero four zero five four to add nineteen thousand four hundred forty square feet of additional consolidated storage unit to lot one fifty-nine and a variance to FAR requirement within the prior zoning ordinance. The applicant has requested a three-week continuance with the November thirty, two thousand twenty-three to allow the applicant additional time to transition between council representation and to coordinate with staff to outstanding items needed to finalize the technical staff report. The applicant has provided a forty-five day extension to the action limit, which now expires on January eighth, two thousand twenty-four. Staff recommends that planning board approve the three-week continuance and schedule this application, the four-day planning board hearing date of November thirty, two thousand twenty-three. This conclude staff presentation. Thank you.
Ms. Garland, Mr. Tedesco, this is pretty straightforward. Anything you want to add to this?
No, Mr. Chairman, I just want to welcome Ms. Garland and look forward to working with her as she embarks on this new chapter in her career. And want to thank staff for their understanding and support as it relates to this continuance. This was one of Mr. Lynch's cases that I will be taking over. So I appreciate the consideration for just a little bit more time for us to get our feet underneath us and also for Ms. Garland, who took over this case from Mr. Shelley. So I think for all those reasons, minor continuum, modest continuance for three weeks is appropriate, and we would submit on our October twenty-sixth letter and respectfully request the continuance. I look forward to bringing this case before you in a few weeks. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board.
Thank you. Commissioners, unless there's any questions, I would look for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the recommendation of a continuance in DSP oh four oh five four dash oh seven to the planning board date of November thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Got motion, Commissioner Geraldo, second by Commissioner Dorner, no discussion. I will call the role Commissioner Geraldo.
I vote aye.
Commissioner Dorner.
Do I?
I vote aye as well. The ayes have a three zero. Thank you, Ms. Garland. Mr. Tedesco, I think that is all that you have before us today. Again, we have, want to wish you all the sympathies that we can offer. I'm sorry for being that you're having such difficult times. You know, we'll have kind thoughts for Mr. Lynch. I know it's difficult for you. So, you know, heal well, I guess I'll say.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We appreciate it. I just want to note that everyone that I've been in contact with over the last twenty-four hours and staff has been just so wonderful and accommodating, and I appreciate that more than I can ever say. So thank you, and you will have a great day and good luck with the move. And we look forward to seeing you in your new confines, and congratulations on that as well. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, moving on with our agenda. We're now to item eight on our agenda. This is a detailed site plan, DSP eighty-nine oh five six dash three Forestville Commercial Center. We have Mr. Wong will be giving the staff presentation. Mr. Howler is representing the applicant. This is also an evidentiary hearing, but again, I'm not going to bother swearing anybody in unless we actually have somebody who's going to be speaking. It's a pretty straightforward issue case as well. So we'll start with staff. Mr. Wong, take it away.
Good morning, Chair. Can you hear my voice?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Good morning, Chair and member planning board. For the record, I am Marie Wong with open design sections. The item being on you is a number eight detailed site plan DSP dash eight nine zero five six dash zero three, Forestville Commercial Center, which is seeking to amend the development district overlay you zone use table subject to DSP dash eight nine zero five six. This uses include the sale and the rental of vehicles, boats, mobile phones, cable camping trailers, heavy motorized equipment and trucks of all kinds with outdoor display and storage. The installation of parts may occur within a quarry enclosed building. Based on the findings presented in the technical staff report, open design staff recommended that the planning board approve detailed site plan DSP eight nine zero five six dash zero three, subject to the recommended conditions of a pool within the technical staff report. The applicants has reviewed these conditions and is in full agreement with them. This concludes their presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wong. Commissioners, any questions for staff on this item? No questions. We'll turn to Mr. Howler.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Board, good morning. Thomas Howler, term with offices in Largo, on behalf of the applicant in this case. I do want to begin by thanking the board for recognizing Dan. As you know, even there aren't that many of us that do this work, and it's a pretty tight-knit community. And even though we may be in different firms, we work closely together and have for many years. I want to thank you for recognizing him. And our thoughts do go out to his family and to everybody in the firm. This case for you, as you noted, is very straightforward. We have worked closely with staff. I want to thank Mr. Wang for his assistance in bringing this to the board, and we are in full agreement with the conditions, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have regarding the application.
Thank you, Mr. Howler. We've nobody else signed up to speak on this. I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, any questions? Under deliberation, any questions for either staff or the applicant? If not, I would look for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we adopt the findings of staff as well as the conditions for DSP eight nine oh five six dash zero three as well as the revision set forth in the staff's report of November first, twenty twenty-three, and that we approve DSP eight nine oh five six dash oh three.
A motion by Commissioner Geraldo, second by Commissioner Dorner. If there is no discussion, I will call the role Commissioner Geraldo.
I vote aye.
Commissioner Dorner.
Do I?
I vote aye as well. The ayes have a three zero. Thank you. On this case, Mr. Howler, thank you, Mr. Wong. I'll see you both in about five seconds. Our next case is item nine, detailed site plan DSP two three zero one three Penn Logistics Center. Another evidentiary hearing. Once again, I don't think we've gotten anyone signed up to speak. We'll start with Mr. Wong, who gives the staff presentation, then we'll turn to Mr. Howler if there's anything else to add. Mr. Wong, take it away. The floor is yours.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and member planning board. Again, for the record, I am Marie Wong with open design section. The item number nine is detailed site plan DSP dash two three zero one three Penn Logistics Center. This DSP is to develop a portion of an existing industry building by completing the ownership and adding a new industry space within their location. The gross area of the completed building will be one hundred seventy-six thousand two hundred forty-four square foot. The gross area of the completed building will be one hundred seventy-six thousand two hundred forty-four square foot. Based on the findings presented in the technical staff report, the Urban Design Staff recommended that the planning board approve a detailed site plan DSP dash two three zero one three, subject to the recommended conditions and approval within the technical staff report. The applicant has reviewed these conditions and is in full agreement with them. This concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wong. There's no questions for staff? Mr. Howler, anything you want to add?
I know, Mr. Chairman, this, for those of you who are familiar with this area, this is former Marlow Furniture Warehouse and showroom. The retail uses have essentially vacated the property and the property is now subject to the military installation overlays and requirements. So and is in the IE zone. So the addition of the additional modern industrial building will be more compatible with the location and will improve the streetscape and also add screening along the ramp there at Route four and Forestville Road, which was called for in the two thousand nine sector plan. We are in full agreement with staff's recommendation and the conditions and be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Mr. Chair, I have just one, I have one question, please.
Yes, sir.
And that's associated with the recommendation of with the approvals on the, I guess it's applicant's exhibit number one. Has that, did I misunderstand? Is that already included within the backup or this is new? Or am I looking at the wrong one?
I did not say any supplemental information in this particular case. We had no proposed revisions to conditions.
Okay.
Basically, you're looking at item nine?
I know, it is. It's, well, I pulled it up as item nine, but apparently it's not supposed to be for item nine. So that's my fault. But under, under the email, it says comes up as item nine. But okay, thank you. Never mind. So based on, based on that, I move that we adopt the conditions and the findings of staff and approve DSP two three zero one three for the Penn Logistics Center.
I'll, for formality's sake, consider the public hearing evidentiary hearing closed. We have a motion by Commissioner Geraldo, a second by Commissioner Dohner. Any discussion on the motion? I'll call the roll. Commissioner Geraldo.
I vote aye.
Commissioner Dohner. I vote aye as well. The ayes have it three zero. Thank you, Mr. Howler.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and welcome to Dargo. We're happy to have you here.
Thank you. Next item is item ten on our agenda. This is a countywide planning division. It's a MR mentor referral MR two two zero four F Synergia Manchester Community Solar Project. Just want to state that per state law and the planning board's mandatory referral guidelines, privately owned public utility projects such as community solar projects are not subject to local zoning. Rather, the planning board reviews and comments on these projects through the mandatory referral process. The mandatory for process is also an opportunity for the public to provide input. In this case, I don't think we have anyone signed up to speak, though I do see Mr. Darcy with the Prince George's Soil Conservation District. I imagine Mr. Darcy is here to answer any questions if there, if we have any, but we'll see. Is that correct, Mr. Darcy?
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Yes, sir. I'm here to answer questions and I just do have one item of concern I'd share with the board when the opportunity arises. Thank you, sir.
Okay, we'll make sure we hear from you. In a minute, we'll start with staff presentation. We have Ms. Hassan is going to be giving the staff presentation. Then we'll hear from Mr. Horn as the representative of the applicant. Ms. Hassan, floor is yours.
Alright, good morning, Mr. Chair. Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, Chair Shapiro and members of the board. For the record, I'm Fatima Hassan with Special Projects Section. Item ten is mandatory referral review MR two two zero four F Synergia Manchester Solar Project. It's a two point four six megawatt solar project on six point nine two acres of a twenty-two point thirty-one acre site in Council District Eight. All information regarding this MR review has been stated in the staff report and staff is in favor of approval with the stated recommendations. Staff and the applicant are in full agreement with the proposed revisions. So this concludes staff presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Hassan. Let's, unless there's any questions, we'll hear from Mr. Horn and then we'll give Mr. Darcy an opportunity to be heard as well. Mr. Horn, take it away.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Members of the planning board for the record are the Horn, the Law Office of Shapiro Horn. Here representing Synergia Manchester LLC and managing members here with us, Mr. Halil Haverstan. Our civil engineer, Ms. Don Volts is here from Dewberry. I do, if I can, Mr. Chairman, would like to add my voice to Mr. Howlers and of course certainly Mr. Tedesco's on, you know, the loss of Mr. Lynch. You know, we go back a long way back when this Lynch was at the law firm of Knight Manzy when he started his career in land use and he is certainly everything that everybody says, a gentleman, a scholar. We all are colleagues and friends and it was a tough loss to all of us and we thank you for the kind words that you said. This morning. Mr. Chairman, I also want to thank, you know, Ms. Hassan and of course Mr. Ray for their thorough review of the mandatory referral application. The applicant agrees with all the staff recommendations listed herein. I think maybe, I'm not sure if Mr. Geraldo's comments was concerning that condition that we proffered, we just really wanted to make sure as applicant's exhibit one that the proposed condition was what we were understanding it to be. And I think as Ms. Hassan said, that the language is something that staff agrees with. Other than that, again, Mr. Haverstan and his company has, you know, developed solar arrays in the county previously. He's well aware of the requirements from the state and requirements from the county. I did have an opportunity to speak to Mr. Darcy this morning and, you know, we have the utmost respect for him and soil conservation and we did become aware of his question and concern this morning, but I think again, this is the initial part of the process as the applicant goes through the requirements that they have to go through with reference to stormwater management of questions that he has probably will be addressed. So again, I just thank you for listening this morning and for supporting the application as set for.
Thank you, Mr. Horn. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Horn or any members of the team? If not, I'll turn to Mr. Darcy. You introduced yourself for the record, sir. Good to see you and the floor is yours.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the planning board. For the record, Steve Darcy, I'm the Executive Director of Prince George's Soil Conservation District. Appreciate the time to speak. I'm here mostly just to express a concern as we move forward with more solar projects in the county. We're part of the mandatory referral, especially when it comes to farmland, solar projects on farmland. We get a lot of let's say, phone calls of concerned citizens when they see projects going on farmland. We also get a lot of calls and concerns when woodland or mature forests are taken down to put solar projects on. So my concern as we move forward as a county, I'm all in favor of solar. I think it's a good, good use. I think we just need to really look closely at our proper land use as we move forward. Mr. Horn did call me this morning, was very concerned that I might try to put a stop to his project. That's not what my intent is. I just think as we move forward with more solar projects, we really stop and look at where we're putting those projects. As Mr. Horn says, as it goes through the review process through the county, Deep I will be looking at stormwater management and our office will be looking at radiant and road and city control, dam safety, if that's, if that's a concern. Thank you for the opportunity and good luck on your move. That's a big deal. And it's good to see you. I think I'm going to start joining more regularly so I can see many of my friends that I don't get to generally see. Thank you. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Thanks for taking the time to speak and thank you for making your voice heard on this issue. We hear you loud and clear. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Darcy or and also Mr. Horn, anything you want to reply to based on what Mr. Darcy said?
No, Mr. Chairman, again, we obviously we respect now this applicant, but all of us respect Mr. Darcy and his his statements and stuff are well taken and well understood.
I appreciate that. Commissioners, any questions?
Sorry, excuse me, Mr. Chair. My apologies real quick. I did want to make a quick comment from our countywide planning division that they are going, they're updating the mandatory referral guidelines and they are going to be reaching out to the Soil Conservation Soil and Conservation District regarding those updates too.
Excellent. That's great. That's great to hear.
No, Mr. Chair, just with, to give some relief to Mr. Darcy. The board itself has some concerns where a lot of these men, with the farmland and especially putting the putting solar where there's good soil. And so I'm glad that staff is working on it and I would also like staff to explore when they do put it on farmland, if it's approved, that there be some provisions for, and I've read about this in several magazines, by putting farm animals as well. So that all, you know, the only thing that we're putting now are to be pollinators. And I think the farmland and this good soil is something that we need to preserve. So thank you, Mr. Darcy, for your concerns. The board shares those concerns as well.
Indeed, and thank you for articulating that, Commissioner Geraldo. And I think staff has heard us loud and clear as they move forward, they'll be looking at those options as well. So Commissioners, if there's no further questions or comments on this, then I would look for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we adopt the recommendations of staff and approve mandatory referral MR dash two two oh four F.
Just for clarification, I think we're approving the recommendations and transmitting them.
Got a motion to second to approve for the recommendations to the applicant. Any discussion on the motion? I'll call the roll. Commissioner Geraldo.
Vote aye.
Commissioner Dohner. I vote aye as well. The ayes have it three zero. Thanks, everybody, for your work on this one. Final item of the day, item eleven.
Excuse me?
Yes.
We need to pause for a second. We have a technical difficulty.
Okay, well, we'll take a two, three minute break for technical difficulties. And we'll let folks know when we're starting up again. Staff, we're back in business?
Yes, sir. We are back in business.
Excellent.
I like your label pen.
My label pin? I think we're good to go. We got one more item on our agenda. We're back from briefly recess for technical issues. We've got item eleven on our agenda. This is Community Planning Division adopted minor plan amendment to the two thousand six approved master plan for the Henson Creek South Potomac Planning Area Endorsement map amendment. This is a review of proposed council amendments. We have Ms. Cluer and perhaps Ms. Benton as well, who will be presenting on this item and we'll turn it over to you, staff.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you fine. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Good morning, Chair Shapiro and members of the planning board. For the record, I'm Lindsay Cluer with the Community Planning Division's Long Range Planning Section. We're here to review the district council's proposed provisions to both the minor plan amendment and sectional map amendment for the Henson Creek South Potomac Planning Area. Next slide, please. All of council's proposed changes affect the parcel at twenty-one twelve Brinkley Road. As a reminder, the planning board retains the residential medium future land use and the adopted minor plan amendment and the CGO and RMF twelve zoning in the endorsed sectional map amendment. The district council's proposed revision to the minor plan amendment would change the future land use to residential low and the proposed revision to the sectional map amendment would change the zoning to residential rural. Next slide, please. Council's proposed changes result in two revisions to the minor plan amendment and one revision to the sectional map amendment. In the minor plan amendment, map one, plan concept map, would change twenty-one twelve Brinkley Road to low density residential rather than the existing medium to high intensity residential area. And the future land use in the land use, transportation and public facilities map would change to residential low rather than retain the current residential medium future land use. In the sectional map amendment, council's revision would rezone twenty-one twelve Brinkley Road to residential rural rather than retain the existing CGO RMF twelve zoning. Staff recommends the planning board oppose all of the aforementioned revisions and transmit comments to the district council accordingly. This concludes staff's recommendation, presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you give me just a little flavor on the record, but a little flavor for us as to why staff is making this recommendation?
Staff agrees with the planning board's vote from the, I believe it was the September fourteenth meeting and the district council in the work session that we had on October twenty-fourth. They didn't have any further discussion on this item, so we're unable to ascertain why they made this specific recommendation. But staff agrees that based on the existing land use and development patterns to the north of on the north side of Brinkley Road, that the current recommend, or the current conditions for the future land use and zoning are most appropriate rather than changing. The north side of Brinkley Road is really predominated by more mixed use apartments, condos, townhouses rather than having a rural condition. And the zoning would, as proposed by the district council, would allow for residential lots with a minimum one half acre lot size, which staff does not believe is appropriate or for the existing conditions.
Appreciate that. Thank you for that additional detail. Commissioners, any questions for staff on this item?
Yeah, can we put that last thirty seconds of info that you just explained in the letter? The Chair Shapiro is going to be sending them because otherwise the transmittal documents are just like, just legalese and it's just the resolution that they have and it doesn't really clarify why very well in terms of what we want. I think I may superuse with that.
Certainly, we can make that provision.
Sarah Benton, for the record, good afternoon, or every afternoon, still morning. Good morning. I did want to ask if legal was okay with that on that letter. There was a discussion as far as what should go in the letter, since there was not really much discussion at the work session with council. We really just wanted to focus on reiterating our position from the adopted and endorsed minor plan amendment and SMA. I don't know if anyone's, oh, the Lisa's here. Ms. Coleman, did you have any opinion on that as far as the letter?
Thank you. The Lisa Coleman for the record, senior counsel. Some minor edits to it would certainly be appropriate as the board deemed presentable or acceptable. So you can certainly add a little bit more information if you want to support why you're you're opposing the revisions.
That's all right, Ms. Benton. So we'll add just a little bit of flavor in the letter. And Commissioners, any other questions for staff or Ms. Coleman? If not, I'll look for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I moved that the board have proven adopted recommendations of staff with the opposition to the change of the sectional map amendment to the two thousand six approved master plan and sectional map amendment for the Henson Creek South Potomac Planning Area and in transmitting the letter to the council to provide some explanation to the council as to why we believe that current zoning remain the same.
Okay. Motion. We got a second motion by Commissioner Geraldo, second by Commissioner Dohner. Discussion. Call the roll. Commissioner Geraldo.
Vote aye.
Commissioner Dohner. I vote aye as well. The ayes have it three zero. Thank you, Ms. Cluer. Thank you, Ms. Benton. Thank you, Ms. Coleman. And I don't think we have any further business before us. Mr. Hunt, anything you got for us?
Our last day here in the county administration building. There are no additional items before the planning board.
Thank you. So we'll officially say goodbye to this building. Uh, as we enter our new life and our new world in Largo. Thanks, everybody, for all your time today. Uh, county administration building, thank you for the memories. And uh, without objection, folks, we are adjourned. Thank you. Have a good day.